Halton as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandaran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround you greatly.
Our steeped and indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
To honor and respect.
Four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
The acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
2022 Policy Committee Meeting. Sure, test? No, we're still getting feedback. Is everyone muted on the microphone? We all just double check? Make sure I am, that would be embarrassing. Test? 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 Technology is a positive. Is that okay with everybody? If we just look at the documentation on our laptops rather than the screen? Okay, thank you, everybody. Thanks for that. Looks like we can move ahead. Appreciate that. Okay, so now we're going to move into item number six, which are our action items. So let's start with item number 6.1. Policy I-01, Catholic School Support. Could I please get a trustee to move that the policy committee recommends that Policy I-01, Catholic School Support, be forwarded along with amendments to the January 17, 2023 Regular Board Meeting for Approval? May I have a mover? Trustee Agnew? May I have a seconder? Trustee Carabella? Thank you. Okay, Superintendent Loffs, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. We're pleased to present Policy 101, Catholic School Support, for approval. There's really only been relatively small changes that we're recommending to trustees for discussion tonight.
Thank you, Superintendent Loffs. Are there any questions in regards to this policy that Superintendent Loffs has brought forward? Okay? Seeing none? Hmm? Sorry, trustee Kennedy, what's up? I'm not controlling all. So as far as Superintendent Loffs is indicating, there's some minor housekeeping changes to this policy, is that correct, Superintendent Loffs?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. So I'm looking for any questions. If not, we can move on and we can vote on this policy. Okay. Trustees, I'll take it now to a recorded vote on the main motion. Okay, trustee Agnew? In favor? Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Student trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Student trustee Chuma?
In favor.
And student trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
And I myself are in favor. So this policy will pass and will be brought forward to the next Regular Board Meeting on January 17, 2023. Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on to item 6.2, which is Policy I-06, Delegation to the Board. Trustees, could I please have someone move that the policy committee recommends that Policy I-06, Delegation to the Board, be forwarded along with amendments to the January 17, 2023 Regular Board Meeting for Approval? May I have a mover? Trustee Duarte?
I'll second.
Trustee Murphy, second it. Okay, Director Klein, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm going to look at the screen that I have in front of me, not up, but the one that's now blank. The policy has been revised in fairly straightforward way. There's lots of language modifications or revisions as per other policies that we've seen throughout the year. When you look at it in terms of the Halton District School Board, et cetera, the Director and Secretary, et cetera, which is sort of ones that we've gotten in the habit of modifying as we go through. Would draw your attention to the fact that we do have, one of the revisions is the addition of the associated policy and procedure of V-09, which is Public Concerns Complaints Process, which is pretty reasonable in the sense of when it comes to delegations, very often that's kind of the issue, and so it's important to have that link to it as well. I'm just going to try and follow the scrolling as. Okay, let's go to the next page. Yeah, I just want to go on to the actual. Okay, perfect. That's what I was just referring to, if you could just keep scrolling. Okay, slow down. And I'm going to call upon the Chair of the Board, Duarte, as well, to give us a sense of some other changes. One of the ones I'd like to draw your attention to, and I apologize, Claudia, because you need to scroll, but I need to kind of have a sense of where I'm looking, is on page... Sorry. Just want to draw your attention to one that was added, if you just keep going down there. So again, keep going, keep going. Okay. A bullet here, that's a fully read bullet, an additional bullet there. Stop, thank you. In terms of the areas that we're looking at, which would be requirements, we added the following. Comments that might identify individual trustees, students, or staff are not permitted. We've seen that in other policies at other boards. It's implied in what we've had before, but it wasn't done explicitly. Does talk about decorum and things like that, placards and things like that, but one can still abide by that last bullet and still be identifying individual trustees, students, or staff, and that would not be permitted with this revision. If you keep going. This last section here, it has been revised to abide by our revised bylaws. And then the rest is the Director of Education, Trustees, Secretary of the Board. But I'd call upon trustee Duarte to speak to some other revisions.
Director Klein, if I could respectfully interject here. I just want to move forward, so thank you for your commentary on the policy. At this point, I'll have to open the floor up for questions, and then trustee Duarte has his hand up already, so he'll be first in line to speak to it. Okay? Okay, so moving forward, yeah, I'll now open the floor to any questions in regard to this policy. So I do see trustee Duarte, you do have your hand up, and next in line would be trustee Saunders. So trustee Duarte, over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is a very important policy, Madam Chair, it's a very tough one to implement. The goal is always to get stakeholders to come and talk to trustees when they have concerns. But clearly, over the past year and a half and more, this policy does not seem to be working. It's not working for the ratepayers. As we can all understand, person comes to delegate because they are mad about something. Something's not working for them, so they want to come and talk to us. So to start with the stress there, the stress with the ratepayers, and this policy is really creating confusion the way it's written right now with the ratepayers. And for me, as Chair and making a good and fair and unbiased decision, it's really difficult for me to do that because of the loopholes that exist the way it's written. There's also a lot of work happening in the background, and we are being unfair to staff. Staff has to go back and forth with the ratepayers, get them to correct things, fix things, but that's taking a lot of time, so we are really being unfair. So all said and done, I'm requesting help from all trustees to put our best thoughts together and minds together in having this policy fixed, and to have your suggestions, bring our suggestions and ideas. There's nothing cut in stone, but we need to put some ideas, which I've thought about, and I'm going to request Ms. Swinton to help us. Now, Madam Chair, there are a whole list of changes that I'm suggesting, some minor changes. I'm not sure how you want to work, I want to be fair with my colleagues and give them an opportunity, or do you want to just take that items one by one?
Thank you, trustee Duarte. So I do see, there is a large, long speakers list. We could just see your proposed changes to the policy. Let's give the trustees a chance to digest it on the screen.
Okay.
And then maybe we could go through it one change at a time.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Is that okay with everybody? Any opposed to doing that, fellow trustees? No?
So I'm going to ask help from Ms. Swinton, I think she's got it on screen here.
Privilege? Is that okay? So, sorry, so we have the red line version, and then we're also looking at further proposed changes to the policy that you're making now, that are highlighted. I just want to make sure I don't lose. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, trustee Agnew.
So Ms. Swinton has got this up here. So the first proposed change is in the standard delegations, the word "who resides or operates within Halton." The reason why this, I'm suggesting this be there, is because in the past we have had that the policy is meant for stakeholders from Halton, somebody who's got challenge here, not from somebody who was in Winnipeg or somewhere. So the reason I want to add this is because we have had multiple requests for delegations from various locations, and I just want to be clear that the opportunity to delegate is for stakeholders from Halton. So that's the reason this line has been added, "who resides or operates within Halton." Do you want to talk about that, Madam Chair, now, or do we want to go further?
I'm just trying to think logistics. So we have a speakers list, so we have Saunders, Agnew, Murphy, Carabella, Kirsten in line. Maybe we can start to talk about this one line. If anyone has any questions to this proposed amendment, for lack of a better word? Okay, so we're going to try and do this in the best logistics way so that we're not all getting confused. So trustee Saunders?
Yeah, I would appreciate an opportunity to read through it before just trying to do it now. Is there a way to sort of table this until our next meeting so we can have an opportunity to read through it? Because like I have...
You know what we can do, trustee Saunders? So if these proposed, we could take a five, 10-minute break, let everyone digest it, and then we can come back to the table and then ask questions to get through that. We can do that as well. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, so just summary. So we're going to email all the proposed... Correct. Correct.
The red was...
Correct. I think that's the best thing to do. We'll email it to everyone, we'll give everyone five or 10 minutes, we'll take a 10-minute break. Everyone digest it, and then we'll carry on, okay? So we'll take a 10 minutes.
Thank you. In the meantime, I think Ms. Swinton has got this copy, the original marked-up copy. I think she can email it.
I do, trustee Duarte.
Okay. So, sorry, we're getting a copy with the red and the yellow?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for that break. We just had some proposed amendments to this policy that were multiple, so we decided to share that with the trustees. Now we'll go back to the original questions and comments in the original order that we had. So trustee Saunders, you were next in line to have a question or a comment.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, through you, Director Klein, can you explain the significance of the standard delegation, where we have most of it, all of it stroked out, and the piece added in the bottom? What are we trying to achieve by doing that? What issues? It's on page 14. Sorry, just at the bottom. Sure, no problem.
Yeah, I'm just asking for that now, thank you.
No, don't worry, don't worry, thank you.
Trustee Saunders, too, if you're looking at the one in front of you, there's page 14, but is there another number at the bottom?
Oh, sorry, you know what, I'm probably looking at the original, sorry.
Four?
Page four, sorry. Flipped in between the two of them.
And the one struck out, sorry. Well, we're just still looking at our own screens, right? We're not sharing the screen anymore, are we?
We're not, but it's not up on the screen yet? I don't see it on my screen. Now it's coming, there we go. Perfect, thank you.
It was one of the red lines.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, now it's, okay. It's purple, and I'm one of mine now. The rationale for this was, this is a fairly straightforward and initial revision, because it abides by the bylaws that were revised prior to Christmas. So those areas that are struck out aren't needed. What would reflect the bylaws that were revised is that paragraph that's fairly brief below it.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustee Saunders, do you have a follow-up?
Just a story, a quick one. And the bylaws you're making reference to, what changes did we make to the bylaws that resulted in this? Is it, I don't recall.
The timeline on that, for the bylaws that we did, am I right, trustee Duarte?
Yeah, Madam Chair, you're talking about standard delegations, right?
Yeah.
So the paragraph that inserted they straight from the bylaws, it says that how decisions are made when you have a delegation, what are the options, and what happens after delegation is made. So the Board of Trustees shall receive that as information unless a trustee brings another motion. Okay, so that's the, it's straight from the bylaws, that's all right. Thank you, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Agnew, you're next in line.
Thank you very much, and through you, Madam Chair. So the question that I do have is, so a question and then perhaps some suggestions. So where it is, and I'm going to try to find it, Claudia, sorry, where it references needing to send in the script in its entirety seven days before, so I think keep scrolling. There it is, perfect, thank you, thank you, trustee Carvalho. And so, so I understand the spirit behind this. So just a couple of comments, and then perhaps a suggestion. So I think the idea behind wanting to have that delegation, as much information on that delegation as possible, is so that we can ensure that it's meeting the criteria as we have outlined. And I think that'll sort of speak to the process that probably needs to be changed. So the way it happens right now, for anyone that's not familiar, is, you know, people can send in a delegation request, it gets emailed to the Office of the Director within a certain timeframe, and then that information is shared with the Chair of the Board, and then a determination is made on that delegation. So I think there's a couple of things here that I would look to suggest. I think one piece is, I think we should automate that process. I think having an idea of perhaps an online form, where people can go on, they can go on the form, request to delegate online, where we can actually outline what the criteria is, so people are fully aware they have to be, you know, HCSB stakeholder, whatever that criteria is. And then I think an allocation on there that would say, what's the scope? What is the scope of the delegation? So not, not having to submit an entire 10-minute script, but enough information so that we can garner what this is about. So if this is about a transportation issue, okay, but is it something that's before the Board of Trustees? Is it within our purview, make a decision on? What is it specific to transportation that the person's looking to delegate on? So if we allow for an area, and we outline what that scope requirement looks like, and people can put that in a box, and then perhaps at the bottom of it is an acknowledgement, you know, I acknowledge that all the information is accurate, they sign it, they send it in. So now it's sort of taken, it's sort of taken away some of that arbitrary decision-making on some of those delegation requests, it's automated it, the information is there, we're clear and concise that they've met their criteria, and they provided this scope. So what that exactly looks like, I'm not the IT person, I'm not staff, but I think that's the spirit behind it. Because I do have a challenge with people needing to fill in and send in a complete delegation presentation and script seven days before. People are often scrambling to do research, or to add additional items to it, maybe they're, whatever that might be. So I do think that that could be a bit prohibitive for people who want to delegate, and we do want to make this process as easy and transparent for them as possible. So I would suggest, or I'd like to suggest, that we remove that particular requirement, and we make it such that perhaps it's an abstract that they send in, or a, you know, a scope, some other kind of wording, and that gets sent in at the time of delegation.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Trustee Duarte, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, yes, I would love to. I love that idea which trustee Agnew has put forward. So I'll just give a little background to all the trustees, because we have a lot of new trustees here. The reason why I was proposing this is because, the way it stands right now, if a stakeholder wants to delegate, they'll just send an email to the Director's office and say, "I want to delegate on busing," for example, and not say anything else. And then, based on that topic, the Chair and Director have to make a decision on whether to accept or not. Now, I do not know what the topic is about, and if I say, "Okay, please send in your delegations," then the person has worked for a couple of days to present a great document, but then when it actually comes to us for review, we say it's not in our purview, or something like that, then we have to decline it. And what happens? First of all, the stress is high with that individual, and then the stress spreads out to all of us then. Okay, so that's the reason why I was suggesting send the entire delegation, and we can make a decision upfront and let you know, and let's not waste your time, and our time, and staff's time, and move on. But I like this idea which trustee Agnew is proposing, and it's up for discussion, trustees like that. I just want to make it work. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, trustee Agnew. And just wondering if you had a wording that you would like to suggest?
Yeah, and just on that note, too, as well, when we were speaking a little bit during the break, but trustee Murphy had made a good point as well, which is, you know, it's a lot of time and effort, and you would hate for someone to put together a 10-minute allegation, and then for us to say, "Sorry, it doesn't meet the cr-" That's just a lot of work on their behalf, too, right? So I think perhaps it, you know, individual group wishing to delegate shall submit an abstract, or a, an outline, like a, you know, a detailed outline of, what was that? Yeah, like, yeah. I mean, I would say using the online form, but we haven't put that forward yet, so I don't want to put that in policy. But yeah, something like that, where they should provide a detailed outline of their topic, or the, I'm happy for any wording people want to throw forward, as long as we think it meets the criteria of what we're looking to have fulfilled. And just removing the piece about the full delegation being provided.
And just for clarification, for all those present, this would be an overlying guideline, so that it would go back to staff to create the procedure, correct, Superintendent Vallow?
Yeah.
And through you, Madam Chair, I would just add that as well. In the policy, I noted the last sentence of the policy actually says that the Director and Company shall develop an administrative procedure to support the implementation, compliance, and enforcement of this policy. So I had a question about where, you know, what, where are we at with the creation of that admin procedure, and we are starting that process? So the suggestions and comments, I'm just taking notes.
Amazing, thank you, Superintendent Vallow.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for that break. We just had some proposed amendments to this policy that were multiple, so we decided to share that with the trustees. Now we'll go back to the original questions and comments in the original order that we had. So trustee Saunders, you were next in line to have a question or a comment.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, through you, Director Klein, can you explain the significance of the standard delegation? Where we have most of it, all of it stroked out in the piece added in the bottom. What are we trying to achieve by doing that? What issues? It's on page 14. Sorry, just at the bottom. Sure, no problem.
Yeah, I'm just asking for that now. Thank you.
No, not to worry. Not to worry. Thank you.
Trustee Saunders, too. If you're looking at the one in front of you, there's page 14, but is there another number at the bottom?
Oh, sorry. You know what? I'm probably looking at the original. Sorry.
Four?
Okay. Page four? Sorry. Flipped in between the two of them.
And the one struck out? Sorry. Well, we're just still looking at our own screens, right? We're not sharing the screen anymore, are we?
We're not, but it's not up on the screen yet. I don't see it on my screen. Now it's coming. There we go. Perfect. Thank you.
It was one of the red lines.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, now it's, okay. It's purple on one of mine now. The rationale for this was, this is a fairly straightforward and initial revision because it abides by the bylaws that were revised prior to Christmas. So those areas that are struck out aren't needed. What would reflect the bylaws that were revised is that paragraph that's fairly brief below it.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustee Saunders, do you have a follow-up?
Just a story, a quick one. And the bylaws you're making reference to, what changes did we make to the bylaws that resulted in this? Is it? I don't recall.
The timeline on that for the bylaws that we did. Am I right, trustee Duarte?
Yeah. Madam Chair, you're talking about standard delegations, right?
Yeah.
So the paragraph that inserted they straight from the bylaws, it says that how decisions are made when you have a delegation, what are the options, and what happens after delegation is made. So the Board of Trustees shall receive that as information unless a trustee brings another motion. Okay, so that's the, it's straight from the bylaws. That's all right. Thank you. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Agnew, you're next in line.
Thank you very much. And through you, Madam Chair. So the question that I do have is, so a question and then perhaps some suggestions. So where it is, and I'm going to try to find it, Claudia, sorry, where it references needing to send in the script in its entirety seven days before. So I think keep scrolling. There it is. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Carabella. And so I understand the spirit behind this. So just a couple of comments and then perhaps a suggestion. So I think the idea behind wanting to have that delegation, as much information on that delegation as possible is so that we can ensure that it's meeting the criteria as we have outlined. And I think that'll sort of speak to the process that probably needs to be changed. So the way it happens right now, for anyone that's not familiar, is, you know, people can send in a delegation request. It gets emailed to the Office of the Director within a certain timeframe, and then that information is shared with the Chair of the Board, and then a determination is made on that delegation. So I think there's a couple of things here that I would look to suggest. I think one piece is, I think we should automate that process. I think having an idea, perhaps an online form, where people can go on, they can go on the form, request to delegate online, where we can actually outline what the criteria is. So people are fully aware they have to be, you know, HCSB stakeholder, whatever that criteria is. And then I think an allocation on there that would say, hey, what's the scope? What is the scope of the delegation? So not having to submit an entire 10-minute script, but enough information so that we can garner what this is about. So if this is about a transportation issue, okay, but is it something that's before the Board of Trustees? Is it within our purview, make a decision on? What is it specific to transportation that the person's looking to delegate on? So if we allow for an area and we outline what that scope requirement looks like, and people can put that in a box. And then perhaps at the bottom of it is an acknowledgement. You know, I acknowledge that all the information is accurate. They sign it. They send it in. So now it's sort of taken, it's sort of taken away some of that arbitrary decision-making on some of those delegation requests. It's automated it. The information is there. We're clear and concise that they've met their criteria and they provided this scope. So what that exactly looks like, I'm not the IT person. I'm not staff. But I think that's the spirit behind it. Because I do have a challenge with people needing to fill in and send in a complete delegation presentation and script seven days before. People are often scrambling to do research or to add additional items to it, maybe they're, whatever that might be. So I do think that that could be a bit prohibitive for people who want to delegate. And we do want to make this process as easy and transparent for them as possible. So I would suggest, or I'd like to suggest that we remove that particular requirement, and we make it such that perhaps it's an abstract that they send in, or a scope, some other kind of wording, and that gets sent in at the time of delegation.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Trustee Duarte, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, yes, I would love to. I love that idea which trustee Agnew has put forward. So I'll just give a little background to all the trustees because we have a lot of new trustees here. The reason why I was proposing this is because the way it stands right now, if a stakeholder wants to delegate, they'll just send an email to the director's office and say, I want to delegate on busing, for example, and not say anything else. And then based on that topic, the Chair and Director have to make a decision on whether to accept or not. Now, I do not know what the topic is about. And if I say, okay, please send in your delegations, then the person has worked for a couple of days to present a great document. But then when it actually comes to us for review, we say it's not in our purview or something like that, and then we have to decline it. And what happens? First of all, the stress is high with that individual, and then the stress spreads out to all of us then. Okay, so that's the reason why I was suggesting send the entire delegation, and we can make a decision upfront and let you know, and let's not waste your time and our time and staff's time and move on. But I like this idea which trustee Agnew is proposing, and it's up for discussion. Trustees like that. I just want to make it work. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, trustee Agnew. And just wondering if you had a wording that you would like to suggest?
Yeah. And just on that note, too, as well, when we were speaking a little bit during the break, but trustee Murphy had made a good point as well, which is, you know, it's a lot of time and effort, and you would hate for someone to put together a 10-minute delegation and then for us to say, sorry, it doesn't meet the criteria. That's just a lot of work on their behalf, too, right? So I think perhaps it, you know, individual group wishing to delegate shall submit an abstract or an outline, like a, you know, a detailed outline of, what was that? Yeah, like, yeah. I mean, I would say using the online form, but we haven't put that forward yet, so I don't want to put that in policy. But yeah, something like that, where they should provide a detailed outline of their topic or the, I'm happy for any wording people want to throw forward, as long as we think it meets the criteria of what we're looking to have fulfilled. And just removing the piece about the full delegation being provided.
And just for clarification for all those present, this would be an overlying guideline so that it would go back to staff to create the procedure? Correct, Superintendent Vallow?
Yeah. And through you, Madam Chair, I would just add that as well. In the policy, I noted the last sentence of the policy actually says that the Director and company shall develop an administrative procedure to support the implementation, compliance, and enforcement of this policy. So I had a question about where, you know, what, where are we at with the creation of that admin procedure? And we are starting that process. So the suggestions and comments, I'm just taking notes.
Amazing. Thank you, Superintendent Vallow. Yes, trustee Carabella, is this regard to the bullet point or maybe suggested? Perfect.
I just wanted to add the comment that I think this form will make it very user-friendly, that exactly they have the information. Other times I've been approached for how to delegate, and I have to send them the delegation policy. They have to read through it. This will be guiding them step by step, and making it really easy. So it's a great idea.
Wonderful. Thank you, trustee Carabella. So can we consider this a friendly amendment? For the first, yeah. Is anyone opposed to this one particular bullet point being utilized as a friendly amendment? Anyone opposed? Seeing none opposed, we can just go forward with the correction to that one bullet point.
Please specify the wording.
Madam Chair, to that?
Go ahead, trustee Agnew.
Thank you very much, through you. So I would, I think we want to be a little careful in being too detailed in the policy because I think the accompanying procedure will, so I believe if we say in here this, a detailed outline, and then in that form or whatever that procedural piece is going to look like, that'll be given to the public, it will say, you know, the outline should include XYZ, and then you can put the detail. I would hazard to put that in here. I think detailed outline, I think encompasses it. And then the actual detail of the detailed outline can be put forward as part of that procedure or part of the other piece. That would be my thought on that.
Yep. Perfect.
Okay, so seeing no opposition, this bullet point, and first bullet point under requirement shall read as follows. Any, an individual or group wishing to delegate to the Board of Trustees shall submit a detailed outline of their proposed delegation no later than seven days prior to the meeting of the Board by 5:00 P.M. Okay, right. Second, second bullet point, a person under 18 years of age who wishes to make a delegation to the Board must submit along with their complete delegate, must? Okay, we have to change that. Exact same word. Must shall submit a detailed outline of their proposed delegation.
Madam Chair, I think that's wrong. The second bullet talks about the consent.
But it says along with their complete delegation package.
Yeah, so read the next part, written consent.
Right, but you don't want to have them have a complete delegation package. It should just be the same detailed outline.
Okay.
Right? And then the written consent also comes with it, but they don't need the delegation package. They just need the outline.
Okay.
It's just, I think, balancing the verbiage. So it's the same. Shall submit a detailed outline or propose. Shall submit a detailed outline or propose. That's the only thing we're changing in that second bullet. We just need Andrew to catch up to us. We're going too fast. And then once we get that, I'll just ask if there's anyone of opposition to those changes, and then we can move on to the next speaker, which is trustee Murphy. Okay, perfect. Okay. Fellow trustees, does anyone have any opposition to that change to the second bullet point? It's just to mirror the first bullet point? Seeing no opposition? Okay, so we can move on. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. This is really fulsome. This is great. Trustee Murphy, you're up.
I guess my first, oh, thank you, Madam Chair and through you. My first question is, I really don't have any idea what the appeal process looks like. So before I can ask any questions, I need to understand what that looks like, so perhaps we can go through that on a declined delegation.
Yes, thank you, trustee Murphy. Trustee Duarte.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just, I'll respond to you. So to our good fortune, we have not had a formal appeal to date on a decision made, but we have had an appeal raised before by a trustee when a delegation was declined. Trustees know about it, and we had a formal appeal. And the Chair and Director at that point in time took time to rethink, to relook at the decisions made and was done without going through a formal appeal process. So if we have to go through the appeal process, it would be at a board meeting. When the Chair would say that a delegation has been declined, a trustee would stand up and say, I would like to challenge that. And then there would be a discussion with trustees, and a simple majority vote would take place. And as per the policy, if at all it wins, that means the appeal is wins, then the delegate would get an opportunity to come back to the Board at the next board meeting and present. So that's what the process would look like.
Can I follow up, Madam Chair?
Yes, please do.
So can the rate payer make an appeal? And is there a process for that?
No. It's only the trustees who can make an appeal. It's a board meeting. The trustees make the appeal.
Okay.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Okay, I'll move on to trustee Carabella. You're next on the speakers list.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So one quick comment was to add into the new bullet, the new bullet that was added on page three of four, comments that might identify individual trustees, students, or staff are not permitted. I wondered if parents should be included as well in that list, if somebody would delegate, just sort of covering everybody, parent and guardians, I guess.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. To Director Klein.
Through you, Madam Chair. I think the reason why it was restricted to trustees, students, and staff really are what the Board entails in terms of people who work, people who represent this Board, people who move this Board. It's basically, it's students, right? And then staff, and then trustees. So I think that's why the thought was not having parents in there.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustee Carabella, follow-up?
I do have a follow-up, not regarding that. Same bullet question. So if a parent or guardian felt that they really wanted to delegate and actually identify an individual, would they be able to do that in camera to receive? Do we have that option to receive delegations in camera?
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Director Klein?
Through you, Madam Chair. I'll defer to trustee Duarte, because I think that might have come up earlier.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
There is an opportunity to accept a delegation in camera, provided it meets the criteria for in camera. So there could be situations that concerns land, whether it concerns staff, where it could be received in camera. So that's the answer.
Thank you, trustee Duarte, trustee Carabella. And I just wanted to, once, we do also have that VO9, Public Concerns and Complaints process that's kind of attached to the delegation as well because we want to make sure that our stakeholders, everyone has a voice, right? So we can defer to that policy as well. Okay, moving on, trustee Kennedy.
Sorry, just back to trustee Carabella's point. Can we not put parents in there? I mean, what if they put the name of a parent in the delegation? That's not, not permitted. So why don't we just put it in there in case they try to put the name of somebody in there? It won't hurt to add an extra.
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Over to Director Klein.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. Trustee Duarte.
I'll just answer that because I seem to have a good understanding of this. The answer is very simple. It's in the first line of the policy, which says it's not the purview of the Board of Trustees. Somebody wants to complain about a parent, that's really not in the purview of the Board of Trustees, so it will not be accepted.
Thank you, Agnew. I'd like to have a direct question on that. Because what if it's a personal, it's a committee, what, that's the Chair, CAC or CIC or the school council?
Sure, Director Klein.
Through you, Madam Chair. I think through the other policy in terms of complaints, that would, it could go through there, but I would not be adverse to having parent or guardian added to that.
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustee Kennedy, do you have a follow-up to that?
So it can be added as a friendly amendment, then?
Is any, are any of the other trustees opposed? I just want us to think out loud. Could that negatively impact anybody on a delegation? Would there ever be a, okay, I'm just offering it up for, okay. I see no opposition to adding parents into that bullet point. Trustee Duarte.
Madam Chair, I will even make the same statement again, that if it's not within the purview of the Board of Trustees, the delegation will not be accepted. But however, if it says, trustee Agnew said, if it's CAC or something, then yes, I agree with that, as long as we're all clear about it.
Thank you, trustee Duarte. And I think we're just trying to make it as easy and clear as possible, right? Because we hear sometimes it's not as easy. We understand it because we live it every day. But as a parent, before I was a trustee, I wouldn't know how to follow through this. Okay, so it looks like we have a friendly amendment. No one's opposed to adding the word "parent." So duly moved. That is complete. Thank you.
No privilege, Madam Chair.
Trustee Agnew?
Just so people can put their hands down if they're done, just so we know. I just want to make sure if I, so I know where I am if I put it back up. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. I'm sure your fellow trustees will lower their hand if they don't have a question. Awesome. I do see, I see trustee Saunders. Okay, trustee Carabella? Trustee Kennedy? Lowering? Okay. Trustee Kennedy? Sure, but there's no one else that has a hand up? Nope. Okay, that's fine. So trustee Kennedy asked for a pass, so I'll go over to trustee Murphy, who seems to be ready, right? Trustee Murphy? Okay, we'll move over to you now.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On bullet seven of page two of four.
You guys are way too fast for me. Okay, which bullet, trustee Murphy?
Bullet seven. So it's talking about when a request to delegate is denied. Well, maybe it's seven on the original, so I didn't count. I'm pretty sure it's still seven. Yeah, yeah, okay. So my question, or I guess a request for amendment, is when that request to delegate gets denied, and then there's an email sent and copied to all trustees. It says, it will offer to include their concerns as correspondence. But I was also, I'm thinking, as a trustee, if I'm going to have all the information I need to start an appeal process, should there need to be one, I would need to know what the scope of the delegation was, at the least, and then the reason for it being declined. Can we have that included?
Thank you, trustee Murphy. I think over to you, Director Klein.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm just looking at it again myself.
I think the suggestions are, Director?
To add, just a rationale? Yeah, I don't think there's a problem with that.
So when you're told that a delegation has been denied, you're just looking for a little more fulsome information? The scope of that, why?
Above and beyond the?
Just the fact that it's been declined, which I think that's all that we're privy to at this moment.
Okay. Yes. Shall we?
Director Klein, you don't see an issue with adding that verbiage? Trustee Duarte, I'm just going to move over to you because it was your proposal.
We have not been doing this in the past, and I'm wondering why we have not been doing it in the past. There could be some in-camera items which could have been part of the delegation. I'm just thinking out loud. I really do not have too much concerns there. I'm just trying to wonder why it wasn't done in the past. We have not shared it. Anybody has any past experience, senior staff?
Yeah, Director Klein, we're looking for anybody that might be historically?
Well, in terms of an in-camera one, that then would, if there was to be some form of rationale or explanation that somehow could be a drawback to that?
I, yeah. If there's some background, I'm not sure. But again, I don't, I don't see a concern.
So Director shall provide written notice to individuals or the group, copy the trustees and offer to include their concerns as correspondence. Again, I'm trying to think of just the limited ones I've experienced here. I don't.
Thank you, Director Klein. Wait one second, trustee Duarte. Student trustee Vallow?
Are we discussing the notice that's provided in the agenda package, or that is provided only to trustees?
Once a delegation is denied, an email goes out to us, yes. Yes. And just, I'll speak to you very quickly because I was as a trustee, I did appeal a delegation. And really, when I found it, it was denied, and I just sent an email to the Chair and Vice Chair at the time saying I wish this delegation to be appealed. Please take another look at it, kind of thing. Because I just picked up the phone and called and said, what was this delegation about? But I don't, if there's no one, I'm just concerned there's any negatives here. That's all I'm asking everyone to think about. Would there be any negatives?
I'm just thinking, Madam Chair, is, can I?
Proceed.
So sometimes delegations are declined before we have a script or anything. So to answer trustee Murphy's question is, the delegation can be declined, but there could be really no script. So there's nothing to share other than the design. Or a small detail thing. Is that okay? Is that, okay?
I just want to understand why it's declined and what the, what the topic was, right?
Right. Okay, that's fair.
Thank you, trustee Duarte. Trustee Murphy, I think it's just a matter of telling us why it was declined. And if you can't, if we don't know right of the day, and we find out later, when you get the full package, that's fine as well, ain't trustee Murphy?
Agenda?
Well, let's say the package comes in and it first, it meets all the criteria, but then when the full package comes in, it doesn't meet the criteria, so they have to deny it. So we may get notice of it on a Tuesday, but we might get notice of it on a Thursday, as long as you get the scope. That's what you're looking for and why.
Yeah, and then the reason may be that they missed a deadline. So, I just, just, right?
Yeah.
I don't really, I just want to know what that reason is and what the scope was.
Yep. Thank you. Trustee Kennedy?
Can it be that all information that the delegates submitted before it was declined, and then it subsequently declined, is provided to all the trustees, not just why we declined it? Like, here's everything they gave us, and here's why we declined it. We can read everything they gave us, and it was declined.
A potential, I mean, I mean, we want to be transparent here, Trustee Duarte. I'm looking at you.
Madam Chair, this delegation process can get really complicated and really nasty. So, there's, sometimes there's hundreds of emails going back and forth, and then it's declined. So, I, what can be provided to trustees is, this is a request for delegation, this is what is provided, and the reason for denying it. But I can tell you from my past experience, it can get really, really, really nasty, and hundreds of emails going back and forth, and I really think we can provide the information, but all those details becomes too much, too cumbersome, because there's so many interactions happening, and it's difficult to keep track sometimes. So, we can provide the information. This is the request. This is the reason by what is requested, and this is the reason why it was declined. I think that's, that's good, should be good enough.
Thank you, Trustee Duarte, and I think it's just a matter of, I mean, if, we need to put some verbiage in there, though. Trustee Murphy, if you want to make a change, a friendly amendment, we need to figure out what that's going to say for that last bullet point. And I think if we get the scope, so let's say a delegation's denied, and it's, it's someone in my area, and you give me the scope, and if I still want to get more information, then I would probably go, okay, can you show me the delegation, so I can get a little more fulsome information? I don't know necessarily if we put it in that bullet point, but that's my opinion. So, Trustee Murphy?
Madam Chair, when a request to delegate is denied, including the, so afterwards, as trustees, comma, including the following information, scope of delegation, and reason for decline. That's sufficient.
Scope, yeah?
So, it's not a run-on sentence. Offer to include their concerns as correspondence in the board meeting agenda package.
Yes, Trustee Duarte?
I see a small problem in this paragraph. So, when a request to delegate is declined, the Director of Education shall provide a written notice to the individual and the trustee, and copy the trustee. So, you're sending the information that you're asking for back to the original person. I think it should be a separate email where the declined delegation email goes, and a separate copy of the email to trustees, saying that this is the reason why it was declined.
Can you just add that to the fine?
Yeah, the trustees will be copied on the decline, but this is the additional detail that the trustees are requesting.
Because I believe, Trustee Murphy, your intent is just for the trustees to get the following information, the scope of delegation submission, and reason for decline. Is that your intent there, yeah?
Yes.
Thank you. Through you, Superintendent Bowe.
Through you, Madam Chair. I just have a suggestion with regards to the placement of your comment there. So, that last bullet that we're looking at really is about communicating back with the individual who was declined, indicating that we're going to include it in the correspondence. If we go up two bullets, it speaks to the process that the Chair follows in terms of approving or not approving, and there's a sentence in the middle that says, "The Chair of the Board will share denied delegation requests with all trustees," and I think that paragraph speaks to the communication with trustees, where you could add, "including the detailed outline submitted by the delegate," and then leave it separate from that last bullet, because really, the last bullet is about the communication with the potential delegate.
Thank you, Superintendent Bowe, you're amazing. Trustee Murphy, would that suffice to, if we just move it into the other bullet?
Sure, I'm just wanting to make sure that it applies to all denied delegations, not just follow-up delegations. Do you hear what I'm saying?
Yeah, so let's delete the line, and then we'll go back up to the bullet that Superintendent Bowe suggested, and we'll read it, see if it... Okay, that's, where, okay. So, "The Chair of the Board, in consultation with the Director of Education and Secretary of the Board, shall determine whether there are significant differences in the written request for an additional presentation and grant or deny the request to delegate to the Board of Trustees. The Chair of the Board will share denied delegation requests, or requests, with all trustees, including the detailed outline submitted by the delegate," and then we wanted to add the scope and reason for denial. "The Chair of the Board will share denied delegation requests with all trustees, including the detailed outline, scope of the delegation, and the reason, and the denial reason, or the reason for denial."
Madam Chair?
Yes, Trustee Carabella?
Maybe that, I, I'm just reading that whole paragraph as representing delegations that are already specifically denied because they don't have a significant difference. So, and that's sort of one bullet in itself, and really, you could just split that paragraph into just another bullet. "The Chair of the Board will share the, will share any denied delegation requests."
And Trustee Carabella, what bullet point are you at?
The, I'm at under requirements, one, two, three, four, five.
Just breaking it up.
Just breaking it up, so that the first part of that paragraph speaks to specifically someone coming to delegate again, and that they don't have a significant change, that they might be denied or might be, and if there is a good change, then they're granted. So, that takes care of that whole idea. And if we make a bullet of the next sentence, "The Chair of the Board will share any denied delegation requests," then we're, we're just talking generally about back to any delegation that's denied, that we get shared, the, the scope and the explanation for, or rationale for denial. And then it makes sense that that whole paragraph about appealing it is to any, any declined delegation.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Carabella. So, shall we reread that? The Chair of the Board... Okay, so a bullet point, "The Chair of the Board will share any denied delegation request with all trustees, including the detailed outline submitted by the delegate and the reason for the denial, and then appeals to this decision must be made by a trustee and shall come before the Board of Trustees for decision. Should the appeal be successful, the delegation or individual will be allowed to appear at the request of the meeting." Okay, hang on. Trustee Bowie?
Madam Chair, there's no sound.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
We're good now.
If we, if we go up two bullets, to the third bullet, under requirements, that one does speak to repeat delegations, so would it not make sense to combine the part that we've extracted there either with that bullet, or move it directly under there for clarity's sake?
Thank you, Trustee Bowie. So, the third bullet, "Any one delegation, any one delegation or individual shall be permitted to make only one presentation to the Board of Trustees on an issue. Any additional presentation on the same issue is permitted, provided that the significant differences are outlined and presented in writing to the Chair and Director of Education and Secretary of the Board seven days prior to the board meeting." So, Trustee Bowie, you want to, what do you want to do with that third bullet?
So, I'm just suggesting, so the part of the fifth bullet that we removed, "The Chair of the Board, in consultation with the Director, shall determine whether there are significant differences in the written request for an additional presentation," it just doesn't make sense to me why we split that up with the regional trustee bullet, so either we should just move that up for clarity's sake, and then leave it the way it is.
Oh, I see what you, okay. Okay, so just move the bullets around. Yeah. Okay, fellow trustees, any opposition to that change?
Oh.
Looking around the table. I see none. I see no opposition. Okay, so, Trustee Murphy, so next in line was Trustee Carabella.
Madam Chair, can I have a question on the same, on the same topic?
Go ahead, Trustee Duarte.
Before we jump to something else, so, "The Chair of the Board will share any denied delegations," and the next bullet down there says, "The Director of the Board, or Director will share," so for consistency's sake, if you go further down, this says, "The Director shall notify." Can we change the Chair of the Board to Director shall share, just for consistency?
Trustee Duarte, what bullet number are you on?
So, the, you see a screen right now, it says, "The Chair of the Board will share any delegation."
Yeah.
And then go one more bullet down.
Where it starts with delegates?
No, the next one.
When a request?
Yeah, "The Director of Education shall provide written notice." So, to keep the consistency of this document, can we put Director of Education in place of the Chair of the Board? Shall deny delegation request. Shall share.
Through you, Director Klein, or Superintendent Bowe, I don't, I think that would be consistent from what I'm seeing so far in this policy. Any comments?
Through you, Madam Chair. Now that I've found it, I would agree, I think that's, that would be reasonable.
Okay, so just on clear, Trustee Duarte, you want to add Chair of the Board to the bullet?
No, no, instead of Chair of the Board, it should be the Director of Education, who shared any denied delegation, just to be, keep it consistent with two bullets down.
Okay, so where we see the Chair of the Board?
Yeah.
You want it to be Director of Education?
Correct.
I don't know if I, Chair of the Board in that bullet, you're talking about communicating to us.
Yes.
So, why would we have the Director of Education? Should not, sorry, this is just my opinion. This bullet is specifically speaking about information to the fellow trustees about why a delegation was declined. Should that not come from the Chair of the Board?
It could, it could, but two bullets down, the, the Director of Education is doing the same thing. So, for consistency's sake, it should be one.
Fellow trustees, anyone have any thoughts on that? Doesn't make a difference? Okay, then we can change Chair of the Board to Director of Education for consistency. Looks like we have no opposition to that. Okay, we'll just give Andrea a chance to change that. Then we're going to get rid of Chair of the Board, and add Director of Education and Secretary of the Board will share any denied delegation request. Okay. Fairly clear there. I think, Trustee Carabella, do you have any follow-up, another comment? Okay, go ahead.
It's a new comment, Madam Chair. Thank you. Just thinking of that, what I brought up before about the in-camera, whether we should add a bullet that just states that delegations can be received in-camera if they meet the requirements for in-camera items, just to inform the public. And perhaps you have to have a link then to in-camera items.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. Through you, Director Klein?
Through you, Madam Chair. Memory serves me, Chair Duarte might have information on that, but I thought we were answering that earlier. I'm not sure if we landed, just with regard to the conversation with the parliamentarian around, around the use of, or the, that venue, the in-camera. Do you have any more to add?
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
So, yeah, I remember this conversation, conversation with the parliamentarian, and the, if you meet those criteria, the five criteria which specified in the Education Act, that cannot be discussed in, in, in the open session, it has to be discussed in-camera. So, it makes sense to, to add that and have the delegation in-camera, but the decision has to be made out in the, of the...
Thank you, Trustee Duarte. Trustee Agnew?
Do you have a, just have a question on that? So, I'm trying, so, if it's, if it's meeting some of that criteria for in-camera, but some of that could potentially be against this policy, which is identifying trustee's staff or parents, or, so then it becomes contradictory to that point. So, if we're saying they can't talk about any of those matters, then I'm, I'm trying to determine what would be, because some of those pieces pertain to in-camera consideration, right? If it's about a personnel issue, if it's about something sensitive, so, like, what kind of delegations are we thinking that we would be receiving that would go in-camera that would still meet all of this other criteria? I think that's what I'm trying to... And then would someone make a request to say, I'd like to make an in-camera delegation? Or they make a request to delegate, and then we determine it's in-camera? But based on what criteria? I think that's the challenge I'm having with adding that.
Maybe a parent or a delegator doesn't, has some fear of reprisal from others in the community by going public. I don't know, just thinking. And they want to do it in-camera.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew, and thank you, Trustee Kennedy. Trustee Duarte?
Yeah. The requirements for in-camera are very specific. It's in the Education Act. Everything needs to be in the open. This is a board meeting, we need to have the discussion in the open. What, to answer Trustee Agnew's question, it could be a delegation regarding property matters. I'm not sure whether, Trustee Carabella, I don't know, you want to elaborate more on what your thoughts were? I'm not, I'm not too sure.
Thank you, Trustee Duarte. Trustee Carabella, would you like to speak to them?
Thank you. Well, it was really brought forward for discussion to see, I do recall we had some, maybe there are more presentations instead of delegations that we've had in-camera on some, some issues, so maybe that's what I'm remembering. I, I see that, I understand your point about if you're going to identify someone, if you had an issue perhaps that wasn't resolved through the complaints process, but maybe that should be the first priority, and it could be taken at a, I don't know, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud, bringing it to the table.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella, and I do know that from my tenure for in-camera, it's all been presentations that have been vetted prior to an in-camera meeting. It hasn't been a delegation, it's been a presentation on something that we cannot speak in public about. So, as far as delegation, yeah, I think between the VO9 and the delegation, I think that surrounds it. Any other, anyone else want to speak to this particular conversation? Trustee Bowie?
I just have a question. If an agenda item is an in-camera item, meaning it can't be disclosed to the public, would it then be right to have a delegator who's a member of the public privy to that conversation because they made a delegation about it? Would that be allowed, or would it have, or would that be a violation of the, of the requirements for in-camera?
Thank you, Trustee Bowie. Very good question. Director Klein, I don't think we've had a delegation in-camera that I can remember.
I haven't seen a delegation in-camera here. I've seen it elsewhere.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, Director Klein. Trustee Duarte?
So, nothing stops inviting an external stakeholder or presenter in-camera for that specific item. So, you come in, you do your presentation, thank you, and then it's up to the trustees to take it from there, so.
Thank you, Trustee Duarte. Trustee Carabella, I, do you have a follow-up?
I have one more new item.
Okay, and then I have Trustee Murphy, you still on speakers, is Trustee Kennedy and Trustee Bowie? Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Trustee Carabella.
Before her item? If that's okay? Because it's just right in the same area we're talking about?
That's fine, I'll allow, go ahead, Trustee Kennedy.
So, just, just for maybe those who have more experience, any, the third requirement, "Any one delegation or individual shall be permitted to make only one presentation to the Board of Trustees on an issue," is that per calendar year, per lifetime? I'm just wondering, like, can someone, you know, we have a new election, nothing gets done on their delegation, they want to present to the new Board of Trustees, is it like a four-year thing, or is it just, is it per year?
Thank you, Trustee Kennedy. To Director Klein?
Well, it's not, there's no delineation of that at this point. I would say, in terms of my experience at this board, I've only seen, again, a few of these, and in terms of doubled-up ones, I haven't seen that yet, so I would ask Chair Duarte if he has any experience with regard to that.
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
So, I think the, the intention of the bullet that's there was because there were some issues which are lingering for a long time, okay? And so, the same, individually, would come and delegate to the board, and then come back to board meetings, or three board meetings later, discuss the same thing. We have not seen this in a, in some time, but the reason why it was there is because there are some issues which get really, really contentious and linger on forever, and the same individual wants to come, not happy with the results of the first delegation, come back again, and, and that takes a lot of board time, all-out time, staff time, that's the reason why that was put in there. So, that's some history there. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Trustee Duarte. Trustee Kennedy, follow-up?
Yeah, no, and just on that point, is there a limit? I'm not, I'm not requesting any changes or friendly amendments, I'm just saying, is there a limit for how many delegations an individual can make in a year? Like, is there, can they make a dozen? Because there's a lot of board meetings, or is there a limit per individual? I don't see anything, I assume there's no limit.
Trustee Kennedy, I'm not aware of any limits to the number of delegations a person can have, but through Director Klein or Superintendent Bowe?
Through you, Madam Chair. No, there's no delineated limit.
Perfect, okay, so, I think I'm at, oh, Trustee Kelly, you haven't spoken, so I'll let you speak if you're ready.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Chair.
I kind of went out of line, but you haven't spoken yet, so I'm giving you a voice. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mine's on an entirely different point. It's on page three of four on this.
Page three or four, yeah?
Yeah. It's the point that says there may be a maximum of five delegations at any one meeting, and it says, "At the discretion of the Chair of the Board, additional delegations may be added as deemed appropriate." So, like, what are the qualifications of these delegations that are decided that can pass or not? Like, if 20 people send them in, what is the decision process between which one of the five are chosen?
Thank you, Student Trustee Kelly. I think Director Klein, but over to Trustee Duarte.
Okay, so, thank you, Madam Chair. There is no rule as such on how to accept. One needs to go by experiences and being fair, being fair with everybody. So, the reason it's five is because it's easy for the Chair to make a decision, I'm going to take five, we have a long agenda, I'm going to take five, times 10, 15 minutes, and then there's going to be questions on that, so I got to think how long we want the meeting to run into. So, if the delegations are different, okay, different topics, then, yeah, we could, we could take a few more, but if the topics are the same, and we know the issues are contentious, and it's not, there's no, nobody's going to win or lose, then it might as well stick to five. So, there's no real rule why we should take five or more than five. We have accepted more than five in the past, but, you know, you, you have to go by your, by reasonable thinking and being fair to everybody and giving everybody an opportunity, so we try our best, but...
Thank you, Trustee Duarte. Trustee Kelly, I think too, is, how do we utilize the time best? We've had some meetings prior to, there were some suggestions about having 10 delegations to keep it at a certain amount of time, and we landed as a, as a Board of Trustees at the time of five delegations. Do you have a follow-up?
Yes, thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Yes, thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Just in regards to that, how would that, I guess, in the case that there is five? Hold on. I just lost my train. I thought, "Oh, come back to me."
That's okay, Trustee Kelly. Happens to me all the time. Okay, so back to the top, Trustee Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a different bullet or a different topic. I'll just go...
Just to be fair, that the delegate has the opportunity, enough time to do, I'm just thinking, do they have enough time to do their script?
Thank you. Sorry, Trustee Murphy. Andrea? Did she need me?
Yes. I was saying there was no sound.
Oh, okay, we're good. Okay, perfect. Okay, thanks, Trustee Murphy. So your, okay, so your question is the timeline for the delegate to receive a response, whether their delegation has been approved or denied?
Correct.
That's a specific question? I will, over to Director Klein.
I don't think the timeline is, are you asking why it's not articulated in it or...
Is there one? One, but is there one that I'm missing or that...
Well, the timeline would be, because they're clearly aiming for the next meeting, right? Would be to be the timeline within which time that you'd have to, I guess, the seven days before.
Your response, your response to requests for delegation. When they respond, when they put a request for delegation, what's the response time on, what's the response time when someone makes a request for delegation? If I'm correct, Trustee Murphy?
My experience has been, it's been like half hour or an hour, because it's often coming at that precise time where you've got to make the decision. Usually it's six o'clock at night, so...
Okay, so would anyone be opposed to just like adding that in? Just like a 24-hour or...
Yeah, I think so. Sorry, so, Trustee Murphy, so your suggestion is to add a timeline for response into this policy?
Yes, just because there are several steps of completion before the day of the delegation, right? So just so that the delegate has time to get their script and their research and whatever they might need to do.
So I'm going to, I'm going to offer it up to Director Klein and Trustee Duarte, as far as what would you feel would be a reasonable timeframe to respond, because we don't want to fail, right? If you say half an hour, it can't be 31 minutes.
So, great question here. There are two parts to this. First is a request. Okay, I want to delegate to the board. So that request should come with a topic and with some information on that. And then, that is generally 30 minutes. So in the first 30 minutes, you say, "Okay, I'm accepting it or not accepting it." Sometimes it can get complicated. Someone may send you just a topic and not send any information. Then staff has got to get back to the delegate and say, "Okay, I got a topic, but I don't have the information." It's easy for me to say, "No, I'm rejecting it," because I do not have the information there. But we want our stakeholders to come to us, so we go back, we take time. So there's some time involved there. We could get a response back the same day, or it comes next day. So we can put a time on for that. Then the next part is when you submit your delegation. Time and again, we have to go back to the delegate and say, "This is not correct, because it does not meet the criteria." And the reason why we are sitting and talking about this policy is because I don't want to be going back and forth with stakeholders and trying to help them pick their policy, their presentation. Follow the guidelines, and if it's good, we accept it or not. Moving forward, that's what the thinking process should be. You're not going to be holding hands, because the policy should be clear, and that's what we're talking about. So we can put a timeline to the second part, too, because we're going back and forth till the last minute. Sometimes it's past the deadline, and we're still working with the stakeholder. That should stop. So the timelines are quite clear. Tuesday evening by 5, by 1:00 PM, we need to receive the request. Thursday, the draft copy needs to go to trustees. The presentation needs to be with us by Thursday. So you have two days in between. And during that time, there's a lot of negotiations, I mean, not negotiations, discussions happening. Staff is involved, so I don't know where we can put it. It's only two days that's in between, so that's the timeline.
Thank you, Trustee Duarte. Trustee Murphy, I'm just offering some, what about a timeline for an original response? So to say, "I will respond to you originally within an hour," and then obviously, if there's multiple emails, at least you're originally responding within a certain timeframe.
Yes, Madam Chair. There's no problem with that. We typically do the first request within the first 30 minutes, and not send a delay dealing the first request. But a second one takes time. It's because going back and forth, back and forth, and we can't really accept it until it's clean to present. So...
Thank you, Trustee Duarte. Trustee Murphy?
That's, yeah, I just, because the request comes in on a Tuesday and then the draft is due on a Thursday, I just wouldn't want a situation where the delegate is getting a response, an initial response on Thursday morning, and then they're scrambling. That's all. I understand if they can just get a response for the first initial delegate submission.
Yes, that's not a problem. We can respond quickly to the first one, but...
Okay, so, hang on. So, Trustee Duarte, Trustee Murphy, so Andrea's pulled up on the screen. So we've got the bullet point. I think this is what we're talking about. An individual group wishing to delegate to the Board of Trustees shall submit a detailed outline of the proposed delegation no later than seven days prior to the meeting of the Board by 5:00 PM. Then this is where the addition probably should go. I offer that up to Trustee Murphy, who's brought this to our attention. Let's see what initial response to the delegate will be provided.
Exactly.
May I strongly suggest you don't have 30 minutes, because if you're 31 minutes, you're late.
Yeah, no.
That's a little unreasonable. I don't think I could respond in 30 minutes.
Madam Chair, 5:00 PM is end of day for, on a Tuesday, so I would say 9:00 AM.
9:00 AM the following day?
It's fine, yeah.
So I'm submitting my outline to you at 5:00, and you're going to respond to that delegate by 9:00 the next morning. Sorry, Superintendent Bala?
I would suggest maybe noon, if that's not too late, because people aren't necessarily working in the evening, and it gives staff the morning. But I'm certainly open to Director Klein. He looks like he wants to respond.
Go ahead, Director Klein.
Yeah, I think that would be, and I think there was something, a response will be given by noon the next day. But again, I think we could go back in history a month, when we would have had bomb threats at our schools and things like that. It would be hard to prioritize, you know, after 5:00 and have something by 9:00 the next day. I'll be totally honest with you. But I think, I think noon and a response, I think, is more than reasonable.
Yeah, so, thank you. Trustee Murphy, is this kind of your intent here? An initial response to the delegate will be provided by noon the following day? You could even put, barring any extenuating circumstances, like a larger bit of bomb threat?
Yes, I'm happy with that. And you know, if they didn't fill out the form properly, I suppose, like, that's where the form will come in handy, right? It'll provide enough information to guide them with what is required, so that there's not as much back and forth. I think that's the idea.
I think we just don't want to ghost them, right? Said, "Hey, we've responded, here's our response."
Again, through you, Madam Chair. I think depending on how the form is set up, if there's an automatic, "Thank you, your form has been submitted," or you're, sorry, your form has been received, then that's an automatic, you know, that's what I'm looking for, response, just letting them know, right? It's right away, it's letting them, so at least they know it's been received and someone has it. And I think that a lot of this could probably be outlined through that automated process.
Perfect. Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Any follow-up? Okay, so, Trustee Kennedy?
Thank you. This may be more of a bylaw question. Chair Duarte earlier. We had a delegation recently, and you're allowed to have two questions for clarification. When I ask questions, I didn't realize they had to be consecutive, like, in the same sentence after the next sentence. Is there a way to, I mean, maybe it's just a friendly thing, but if sometimes you have a question, you get an answer, someone else asked a question, that makes you want to ask another question based on what someone else asked. Is it okay that they don't have to be consecutive? And they have three minutes to respond. I mean, you could ask one question or two, they could take the whole three minutes to answer the first one, never answer the second one. I mean, can't put every little detail everywhere. But would there be a little bit of privilege to, you know, they don't finish actually answering the second question, to give some more time to get that answer? Does it have to be so specific to the second?
And I would say, Trustee Kennedy, and I could tell it to Director Klein or Trustee Duarte, it is in the bylaw. Those are our rules that we play by. I'm sure that any chair we have in this board would be open to an extenuating circumstance, and we have to make that call at that time. Trustee Duarte, do you have a comment?
Yeah. So there's a reason why we put two questions in three minutes. Think about five delegations, 10 minutes per delegation, and then you have nine trustees asking questions for three minutes. Okay? It works out to a long time. So that's the reason why it was there in the first place. You have to answer your question about splitting that time. It becomes very difficult to track nine trustees who want to ask one question and then come back for the second round of questions. That's the reason why, from the management point of view of running the meeting, it's three minutes. Come in, ask a two questions. If you take long to answer your, ask your question, and the delegate takes long to answer, bad luck, but it's three minutes for two questions. That's the way the bylaw is.
Thank you, Trustee Duarte. Trustee Kennedy?
I mean, yeah, it hasn't happened yet, but maybe they just find a way to answer the first one, not wanting to answer the second one, and you never get an answer. That's all I'm saying.
And as a trustee, you are willing to look at the bylaw and open a motion to take a look at it by law another time, so I'll just all clear that up. Okay, Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So last point for me, and maybe it's a big one. Just the part, the part that we've changed this whole policy is our new bylaw, so the way that we respond to a delegation. And I was not at the meeting where we had this discussion when we were doing our bylaw review, so I regret that. I wasn't able to attend all the meetings. So can I understand why it was reduced to what it is and that there is no option to have a decision on the matter at the same meeting? So put forward a motion, basically, is our past experience.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. I mean, I was on the committee, Trustee Agnew, Trustee Duarte. I could speak to it. My opinion of this was that one of it was time management, because if we're going to receive it as element, information, it becomes a default once the delegation happens. And also, I think the intent, and in my opinion, Trustee Duarte and Agnew, correct me if I'm wrong, it was from trying to stop creating motions and making decisions on the fly without having appropriate data. So it gives us the time to, to think about a motion and maybe put a motion forward and get all the information, rather than making decisions quickly that sometimes don't work out in the best way. So that's my opinion. Trustee Duarte or Trustee Agnew, would you like to speak to it?
I can speak to it, Madam Chair. So you're absolutely correct. When a motion is put forth, and since we are up in a public sector, organization, trustees need to take times to reflect on a motion put on table, because it involves money, it involves staff resources. And so the decision that was made by the bylaw committee at that point in time and approved by the board was to receive it as information unless we refer it to a committee. So if it goes to a committee, then committee takes time to trash things out and come back to the board with some recommendation. Yeah, so the reason was when we make quick decisions, we do not think through the entire process, we do not make good decisions. That's the reason why the bylaw was made like that.
Thank you, Trustee Duarte. Trustee Carabella?
Okay, I have two follow-up. One is would be, not let's say a motion at that meeting then, but could it be a notice of motion? Was that ever discussed, that you wouldn't make a motion on that delegation that night, but it would allow you to make a notice of motion for the following board meeting?
Thank you, Trustee Carabella, and exactly what Trustee Agnew was saying there. Then we have another process of how to create a notice of motion, and what the rules must be to create a notice of motion, so then that would be out of sync. I think this is a discussion, if we want to bring it up to a bylaw, not for this particular meeting, because it's just, it's just mirroring the bylaw that we've already approved at the board table. So to make changes now, we can't do that, I don't think, so go ahead, Trustee.
Madam Chair, yes, I think, Trustee Carabella, it's a good point, the bylaws speak to that. So when you have a delegation, if you want to make a notice of motion, if it's unanimous, then that notice of motion gets converted to an action item at the next board meeting after, after delegation. The bylaws are covering that.
That circumvents our notice of motion process right now.
Correct. Correct. It's in the bylaws. So the bylaws have been amended to incorporate the notice of motion, considering the fact that there could be a delegation and there has to be some action taken, but it should go to the next meeting, not at that meeting. I'll point out the bylaw to you.
Just pointed publicly, because isn't the point of having a notice of motion the way we've changed it now to come before, it has to come in advance of the meeting so that we have time to process that notice of motion? So I just, how would it work with this? Like, you're, right now, if we want to have a notice of motion, we have to provide it before the meeting for obvious, and for reasons that have been established. But this is now allowing for a notice of motion to happen during a meeting, so it seems contradictory to the fact that we have to do a notice of motion now before a meeting.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. That's correct. The notice of motion was changed in the spirit.
9:14, Madam Chair.
Could I just finish my thought, Trustee Duarte?
Yes, yes, I was...
Thank you. What was the thing?
9:14.
9:14.
I'm trying to help you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Trustee Duarte. I'm a big girl. I can take care of it. Okay, so notice of motion during 9:13, notice of motion. I'll read it for everyone. A trustee may place a notice of motion upon the agenda of the next regularly scheduled meeting. Such notion of notice of motion must be submitted in writing to the Secretary by 3:00 PM the day before the regular meeting of the Board, unless Article 9.14 applies. Shall take the form at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board. I shall move or cause to be moved that. May be accompanied by an explanatory note will be printed in the agenda and under Item 12. Shall be taken as read and recorded in the minutes unless any trustee requests that it be read in full and shall not be subject to any debate or comment at the meeting which is first introduced. So that's a regularly scheduled meeting.
No, that's, I'm sure, 9.14.
Thank you. Okay, notice of motion during a meeting. A trustee may submit a notice of motion during a regular meeting of the Board if it arises from and relates directly to the presentation of a delegation, information item, or staff report at the meeting. Such a notice of motion must be submitted in writing before the adjournment of the meeting. Shall take the form at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board. I shall move or cause to be moved that. Shall be read aloud and shall not be subject to any debate or comment at the meeting which is it introduced. So that does say that during a delegation, a notice of motion may be submitted based upon that delegation.
Where would that fall? Would it go down to under notice of motion then? Like, if that, just pointing privilege, if it happens, if someone gives a delegation and part of the response to the delegation is in fact a notice of motion, does the notice of motion get given right there on the spot in response? Or does it go into the end of the meeting where we would normally put a notice of motion?
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Trustee Duarte?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So it goes in the, on the information items, 10 points, whatever, 11 something. So it goes in the, on the information items, ten point, whatever, eleven something. It'll go there as notice of motion.
So trustee then would say, let's say someone delegates and the trustee wants to put a notice of motion forward, they would say, through you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to, I'd like to put a notice of motion. Trustees have to agree to that?
Right.
Is that just like they would any other action? Is that correct?
No, it's a notice of motion, no.
So they would do a notice of motion, but they wouldn't read it at that time? You would just say, okay, what's the title of your notice of motion? And then that would go under information items and then they would read it by the end of the meeting?
Correct. And again, Madam Chair, it has to, it has to be germane to the discussion there. Germane to the, yeah, delegation, yeah, yeah, yeah. Correct. Thank you.
Okay, trustee Carabella? Any comments or questions?
Thank you for that clarification. That's, that's very important. I just wanted to then ask, when a motion is adopted to refer the matter to a committee, what if there is no committee about that delegation? Like the delegation is about busing and there's no committee? Or is there, or some other topic that there is no committee for that?
Thank you, trustee Carabella. Trustee Dwork, would you like to answer?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have not gone through this process before. So again, it could be one of the existing statutory committees we're talking about or accept as information or put a notice of motion. You have, I think we have enough of options available to, enough of tools available to us, Madam Chair.
I agree. Thank you, trustee Dwork, trustee Carabella. I think if it was some topic that we didn't have a committee, then we would have to create that.
We'd have to make it, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, trustee Carabella, are you good?
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Well, folks, there's no more questions. So would you like me to? We, we've had really great discussion, really worked this policy, right? I don't think this policy can be worked anymore. Should we go to the start and just kind of go through all the changes and then I can see if anyone's opposed and we can make it all a friendly amendment? Any opposed to that suggestion? Okay, seeing none. Okay, let's just make sure we're all clear on what we're talking about and what changes we're making and then we can move forward. Okay, so let's see. Okay, so standard delegations, this policy applies to any HCDSP stakeholder, individual or group who resides or operates within Halton. Okay, that was the one change. Thank you, Andrea, for this. Okay, under requirements, bullet one, an individual or group wishing to delegate to the board of trustees shall submit a detailed outline of their proposed delegation no later than seven days prior to the meeting of the board by 5:00 P.M. An initial response to the delegate will be provided by 12:00 P.M. the following day, with the intention of the procedure will now go to staff to create a procedure that supports these requirements in the policy. A person under 18 years of age who wishes to make a delegation to the board shall submit a detailed outline of their proposed delegation with. So this, we just want that to mirror bullet point number one, to make it the same. The Director of Education and Secretary of the Board will share any denied delegation request with all trustees, including the detail, detailed outline submitted by the delegate and the reason for the denial. Oh, I have questions. There's questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just wondering.
One sec, sorry, trustee Carabella. Is this germane to me reading it? Because I have two people with their hands up.
To this particular part, but I'm sorry, I'll put my.
Thank you, trustee Carabella, sorry, just keeps me in line. So I guess I'm assuming you want me to stop? Trustee Dwork?
Madam Chair, I did not see any other hands there, so I thought I was going to pass a comment on a couple of items which we didn't talk about in this policy. Since you're going through it, I'm okay. You're going to cover everything.
Okay, go ahead, trustee Agnew.
Thank you very much. Just something back up at the top that spoke to the HCDSP stakeholders and then it said who reside or operate. I wasn't understanding why we needed to have that verbiage. I didn't understand why it wasn't just an HCDSP rate payer or stakeholder, whatever that wording was. Like why does it, why do we have to put who resides or operates within? And then what does operate mean? And what is all the, I think those could be open to.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. I think, and trustee Dwork or can, or trustee can speak to this. I think it's bleak because that's our definition of stakeholders, is it not?
Yes, just, just to add clarification, Madam Chair, and yeah, it wasn't clear before. And there's a definition of stakeholders further down under definitions. But this is just being added to the first part to make it clear to everybody because there have been requests to delegate from, from Hamilton, from Ottawa, from all over the place. And so just to make it clear to everybody.
Right, but it's actually not clear because the definition says any individual or group who can affect or is affected by decisions made by. And then up above, you've got HCDSP stakeholder or who operates or resides. So they actually, if you just wanted to have a definition of a stakeholder, then I would suggest the definition of a stakeholder. Because I think to put who resides or operates within Halton.
Right.
I think you might, that might create issues. If they're, if they're a stakeholder, they're a stakeholder. So I think.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Trustee Dwork?
Madam Chair, can I request Ms. Swindon to give some clarification because I used her.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, and through you, Madam Chair. So I will go next to turn off the recording. Thanks, Claudia. Okay, the reason we can't change the definition of stakeholder that's within this policy, it's actually within several of our policies and procedures. The, the definition itself is taken from IAP 2, which is International Association of Public Participation. It's the, the official definition of a stakeholder, any individual or group who can affect or is affected by decisions made by an organization. If we change the definition for this policy, we would have to change the definition for all policies. So my understanding of what trustee Dwork was trying to accomplish by this is he's, he wants this particular policy on delegation. He wants only stakeholders who live within Halton or who, you know, in the case of an, of a group who operate within Halton to be able to delegate to the board. You could have stakeholders presumably that don't live within Halton. There are, there are provincial organizations who would consider themselves stakeholders because they could be impacted by the, by a decision that our school board makes. So for the purposes of this policy, if you do, if you want to exclude any stakeholders who do not live within Halton, I think the only way to do it is by, by, I would, I would definitely not be changing the definition because that, that's not only what doesn't mean we would have to go back and change all definitions and other policies, but it also, I think, is contrary to our philosophy on, on consultation. But I understand why for this particular policy, you may want to just limit it to, to stakeholders who, who reside within Halton. And that was my understanding in conversation with trustee Dwork.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Swindon. Go ahead, trustee Agnew.
So just a follow up for clarification, I, I actually wasn't looking to change the definition of stakeholders. I was looking to make the definition of stakeholder consistent with the, under the standard delegations because trustee Dwork had referenced that the reason we had that wording was to reflect the definition, but it doesn't actually directly reflect that definition. So I understand what's being said. And the reside is fine. I, I don't understand why we need to have the piece about operates. And, you know, maybe I'm just looking at this from a perspective, if they're HCDSP stakeholder, they're an HCDSP stakeholder. If they're affected by a decision being made, then they should be able to delegate on that matter. They're a stakeholder. So I think as long as they meet the definition as it's underlined below as of a stakeholder, I don't know why we need to have resides or operates. That's just my two cents, Madam Chair.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Trustee Dwork?
I'm, I'm fine as long as we are clear about it. Ms. Swindon, do we, I mean, by removing that part, reside and operate in Halton, is it very clear to us that it's only HCDSP stakeholder? The idea was to make sure that there could be a HCDSP stakeholder who's provincial. That's what Ms. Swindon said. That's the reason why we have put this resides or operates in Halton. Do we want to open it up to everybody?
Trustee Dwork, the only thing that Ms. Swindon said that kind of clued into me now is she said that they could be affected by our decision making, right? So if, even though they don't reside here, don't operate, if they're affected by the decisions we're making, we should allow them to delegate, I think.
Then again, the whole purpose, the purpose of this policy gets, it gets more complicated than, because I've, I mean, we have had requests from Hamilton, from Ottawa, and from all over the place, are we going to entertain delegations from there?
So do you want to just maybe leave who resides in Halton? So this policy applies to any HCDSP stakeholder who resides in Halton wishing to delegate and take out the operates within Halton?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I think that's why. Again, I was just trying to make sure that we were, if we're saying HCDSP stakeholder, then it should be as an HCDSP stakeholder is defined. That's, and the definition is right below. So I didn't know why we needed to restrict the stakeholders.
I see Ms. Swindon has her hand up. Andrea?
So I'm not sure, okay, I, I'm not responding, this is not in response to trustee Agnew because I think what trustee Agnew was saying is that she does not agree with, with the concept of not, of not allowing certain stakeholders. I think she, she's suggesting we should open it up to any stakeholders, doesn't matter where they live. The reason it says operates is because stakeholder could be an individual or could be a group. And how do you know where a group resides? If you've got an organization, where do they live? So that's why the word operate is there because operate reflects back on, on the word group. So I mean, so again, we're back to if, if, if the consensus is we're going to limit it to stakeholders that reside or are from Halton, maybe we can put it that way. Would that be better for you, trustee Agnew? Maybe you're struggling with that word. If it's stakeholders who are from Halton wishing to delegate? And if, if not, if you remove that, then you are, it's as trustee Dwork has just said, you would be, it would be, in that case, it would be okay to have presentations from Ottawa, from, you know, out of province, from, you know, you know, they could presumably be stakeholders that are not even within our province, that could be impacted by a decision that this board makes.
Agnew?
I mean, I'm not going to lose sleep over it. I'm trying to just be as transparent as possible. And I, I think I struggle when we try to put limitations on, you know, if an HCDSP stakeholder is defined as an HCDSP stakeholder as is listed below, then my preference would have been to stay with that as the, as the definition. If it's the will of the trustees to restrict that further to who resides or operates, you know, I think you're, you know, you might be splitting hairs there. But again, I'm not going to lose sleep over it if that's the will of the other trustees, so.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Should we put this one particular bullet point to, to a vote? Leva?
I have something to clarify.
Oh, and yes, sorry, trustee Murphy, and then I'll go to Superintendent Cordero.
So I'm trying to understand, like a stakeholder is a stakeholder, is a stakeholder, no? Like I'm just trying to understand why are we differentiating based on their location?
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Trustee Dwork, maybe you'd like?
Yeah, yeah, I'll just add a little bit based on past experience. So we could have somebody from being a stakeholder, somebody who's provincial and wanting to delegate here, but that does not reflect the, the community out here, which is very, very important. Situations elsewhere, they could say, okay, I'm affected by this decision, but what's happening in the community here? That's what we should be concerned about, that's what our policy should reflect.
Okay, so maybe could you provide me a generic example of a stakeholder that lives out of the province that could be affected by a decision made by the HCDSP?
I have had, I mean, based on my past experience in the couple of years, I've had requests from Hamilton want to discuss some topics and my first response was, you're not my stakeholder. You do not know the realities out here. Why would you want to discuss? Then I had requests from Ottawa too. I know, I want to discuss on some issue which your board is discussing, which is not, to me, it's just adding, adding to the discussion that we are already having, which is already complex in nature. So why would we as trustees like to have? I don't know, it's just becoming compli- complicated for the chair to make a decision. So that's, it's, it's the will of the board at the end of the day.
Thank you, trustee Jordan. Just, just have note too, just think if we do allow, if we move forward and allow anyone that's a stakeholder, they could be bumping out our local residents from delegating. If we're only allowing five and people that are not within our region are delegating, we may not allow any of our local people to delegate. That's the other side of the coin. Superintendent Cordero, I'm going to go over to you. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I think I would be remiss if I did not share with everyone that we do have quite a number of students who reside outside of our district, who attend our district for IV programs and advanced placement programs, living in Mississauga, in Brampton, Hamilton. And I, I just wanted to share with you with that. And if there's a way to capture those parents and, and students, if they wish to speak to issues, maybe there's some way to capture that language in the phrasing.
Thank you, Superintendent Cordero. Very good information. Thank you for that. Trustee Murphy?
So I, I know this is like probably a moot point because we're not going to change the definition of a stakeholder, but shouldn't the stakeholder be the rate payer? Like what, where is that in the definition? Can someone just say they're, well, I'm affected by this? Like what, what defines affected by, if we're going to split hairs?
Thank you, trustee Murphy. It's a very good question. Yes. Ms. Swindon, could you respond to trustee Murphy's question?
Yes, thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Are, so decisions of this board impact more than just ratepayers? For instance, you, okay, I'm going to give, draw from examples from previous delegations. We have had delegations, we've had requests to delegate from members of the community in response to raising of the pride flag. When we had these, the, the motion that was on the table about the pride flag, we had parishes outside of Halton wanting to delegate. We've had organizations that are outside of Halton. They are not ratepayers, but they, they thought because they represent individuals that may be impacted by this decision, that they should be delegating to our board. So there, so without, and I hope I'm being clear, just because you're a rate, you're a ratepayer if you live in Halton, but there, we have several staff who are not ratepayers. They do not live in Halton, but they are stakeholders. So that, that's why it has to be as broad as it is. As simple as it is, is any individual or group who can affect or is affected by the decisions made by this board, that's considered a stakeholder. So that's why we can't leave it at, at ratepayers.
Thank you, Ms. Swindon. Make that knowledge. So team?
How do we address what Superintendent Cordero brought forward? Then do we need to add in there who attend school or who, like is that, attend any programming at the? For the GTA? Just think if it's specific to that, so, you know, who reside or operate or attend any HCDSP schools or programs, however that wording would be, then we would capture those people because they could be affected by busing decisions or expansion decisions or things like that, right?
Thank you, trustee Agnew. Superintendent Cordero?
And yes, the GTA may not be enough because Hamilton doesn't reside in the GTA and we do have, I think, a few students who attend assumption who reside in Niagara, Niagara Peninsula and Grimsby and attend their.
Bless you.
And attend their AP program.
Thank you, Superintendent Cordero. I didn't, I missed the last part, but that's okay.
Through you, Madam. Through you, Madam Chair. I, I just wanted to quantify that some of the students and their families who attend our HCDSP schools reside outside the GTA in the Hamilton community and the Niagara Peninsula.
And thank you for that because if we read this line verbatim, they would not be allowed to delegate and that would be a shame. So we have to find a way around it. We're all smart people. This policy applies to any HCDSP stakeholder, individual, group who reside and/or attend school? Attend our schools?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
How about if the policy, the policy applies to any HCDSP student and/or parent slash guardian and HCDS, and other HCDSP stakeholders? Can we say that?
Okay, so Andrea's got, this policy applies to any HCDSP staff, students, families, and/or HCDSP stakeholders. This policy applies to any HCDSP staff, students, families, and/or HCDSP stakeholders. Superintendent Cordero, was there something there you wanted to add?
I think it's wonderfully done through you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Superintendent Cordero. That's Ms. Swindon, all Ms. Swindon. And do we want to, trustees and team, everybody that's here, do we want to remove who resides or operates within Halton? Anyone? Silence is acceptance? Okay. Okay, so looking at application scope, standard delegations, it's going to read, unless we have opposition, this policy applies to any HCDSP staff, students, families, and/or HCDSP stakeholders, individual or group who resides or operates within Halton, wishing to delegate or make a presentation to the board of trustees on an ad hoc matter that falls within the board's jurisdiction. Any opposition to that?
Can I just clarify one thing? Not to.
You sure may, trustee Murphy.
Not to drag this out, but it, it's, it's still insinuating that the individuals listed must be residing or operating, no? So if they were part of an IV program living in Hamilton, would, could, you know?
Okay, so you're suggesting to remove the two words and say who reside? Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Swindon is wordsmithing something? It's going to be great, I know it. This policy applies to any HCDSP staff?
So there are two ways we can do. We can remove the who reside or operate within Halton and then you are, and then for that point, if we do that, then we may as well just leave HCDSP stakeholders by itself. I don't think we need to be as explicit. The other way is maybe, because I was thinking the same thing, trustee Murphy, as I was looking at it, still kind of could be insinuated that the staff or families have to live within Halton. So this policy applies to any HCDSP staff, students, and families or HCDSP stakeholders who reside or operate within Halton. I don't know if that's.
Okay. Yep. Trustee Murphy? Okay, so let's read it again. This policy applies to any HCDSP staff, students, and families or HCDSP stakeholders who reside or operate within Halton, wishing to delegate or make a presentation to the board of trustees on an ad hoc matter that falls within the board's jurisdiction. So we're including those that may not reside for our students that live outside of Halton. We're including stakeholders. We're saying that they can delegate if it affects them, if the issue is affecting them and falls within our jurisdiction to make a decision on. Trustee Murphy?
I think it works.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, good, awesome. Oh, trustee Bowie?
I'm so sorry.
Don't be sorry.
Why are we specifying an ad hoc issue?
Thank you for that question, trustee Bowie. That's a very good question. Trustee Duarte?
I have no idea. It's been there, like...
I knew that was going to be the answer. Good question. Anyone that was at this board prior to us? Trustees on an ad hoc matter? Ad hoc matter that falls within the Board's jurisdiction? Should be in on any matter. Yeah. Ms. Swenden? Help?
I feel like I'm speaking a lot. Thank you, Madam Chair. I was, I do recall this, the apology, this policy change. And it was because they made the distinction between process review delegations and standard delegation. So I think that the adding the ad hoc, and I will agree with student trustee Bowie, because I don't, I don't know if we need it. I do think that that was added so that it would be distinct from a matter that would fall under a process review. So if we're reviewing, you know, if we're doing a school band review or school accommodation review, there are slightly, you know, different timelines for those, and a different process that's very prescriptive. So they wanted to separate that from a standard delegation, which are issues that may come up that aren't planned, that perhaps the trustees aren't even reviewing this. It's not on your table, but somebody wants to bring it to you. So that's why they added the words ad hoc. I'm not sure it accomplishes that, and I don't even know if it's necessary, but that's, that's my recollection of why it was added.
Because as you see in our application and spoke, it's broken down into two separate types of delegations, process delegations and standards. So maybe that's a moot point, the ad hoc. Trustee Bowie, yes?
The only reason I was just thinking about that, because in my mind, ad hoc means a previously undiscussed or impromptu issue, where it could be an issue that's been planned, that's coming to the board after, like, a process or whatever it may be, or it's an issue that's been, you know, the public has been notified that it's coming to the board, which is why I was just, you know, thinking about that. But if it's, if the Board of Trustees agrees, then potentially you can remove it.
Everyone, it sounds like it's a moot trustee, and Ms. Swenden never apologized, because we have all the experts in the room for a reason, so we can make a good decision, right? So let's remove ad hoc. Trustee Duarte, anyone else have any opposition to that? Okay, let's delete it. It's deleted. Okay, so we have no opposition to that, so, okay. I have trustee Saunders with your hand up.
Sorry, I'm just wondering if we even need all these words? We said the policy applies to HS, HCDSB stakeholders, and then would it then default down to the definition below saying, stakeholders, anyone who has an issue with, that we may impact? And then we don't have to specify everyone's name at this? And then I guess we run the risk, then, that, as this trustee Duarte was saying, that, you know, we could get people from outside, but would that not sort of just make it consistent with the original definition?
Thank you, trustee Saunders. I think the conversation, I'll go over to trustee Duarte. I think is, we have the definition of stakeholders, but we're just granulating it a little bit?
Correct.
So yes, you may be stakeholders, but you need to reside or operate within home?
Absolutely correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Trustee Saunders?
No, that's fine. No, I'm just wondering if we just wanted to say stakeholder, and that means everybody? And then, but if we want to restrict it to reside, operate in Halton, and then pick up the students and families that are outside, this accomplishes that? I guess that's fine.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Saunders. Well, everybody? Seeing no more questions? I don't even know where I was when I was reading it from the first time. Do you guys want me to go back and read it? Or are we good? Is there any opposition to these changes that we've had a really fulsome discussion on? And really, thank you to everyone. What a great, great thing we're doing for our people. You just put that hand up just two seconds ago, when I looked to my left. Charlie, please leave that, trustee Kennedy. Power of... Trustee Duarte?
Madam Chair, sorry for being a pain. I just want to bring everybody's attention to the red line down and keep going down. One paragraph was added at the bottom, right at the bottom, Ms. Swenden. Further, yes, the last part. The, this paragraph was added specifically because of the situations that we have been having in delegations coming to the board late, and then back and forth dialogue with the parties involved. And there's so much of work happening behind the scenes. And I must really thank our staff for the patience and the help given. So hopefully, with this paragraph that is added, I want to say that we should avoid the back and forth. The policy should be clear to anybody who wants to delegate right now. The, when you submit a delegation, it meets a requirement, we accept it. You do not meet the requirements, there's ample grounds to reject it. And as, I want to eliminate the process of going back and forth, because it's taking a lot of my time, a lot of director's time, a lot of staff time. And it, and, and, and that's, that's a lot of time. So trustees, this paragraph is added to make sure we get a delegation, we make a decision, we move on. And I hope everybody's okay with that paragraph.
Thank you, trustee Duarte, for the speech. Any opposition? Okay, seeing no opposition, we have a majority. The policy will be brought forward to our next regular board meeting on January 17th, 2023. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. Okay, moving forward, let's go on to item 6.3. Policy says, trustee Carabella? We do? We had? Oh, okay. Thank you, trustee Carabella. I've lost track, if you want to know the truth. Okay, so we'll take a vote. So let's go back. We're taking a vote on item 6.2, policy I-06, delegation to the board, with all of the changes that we've discussed. So... Okay, so trustee Saunders?
Agreed, I think.
In favor?
A favor, sorry.
No problem. Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Chuma?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
And I am in favor. Unanimous. Okay. Did I miss anything else? Am I good? Okay. Okay, thank you. Item 6.3, policy II-2424, home-to-school student transportation. Trustees, can I have someone please move that the policy committee recommends that policy II-24, home-to-school student transportation be forwarded along with amendments to the January 17th, 2023, regular board meeting for approval? May I have a mover?
Trustee Agnew?
Trustee Agnew is a mover. May I have a seconder? Trustee Powell, thank you very much. Superintendent Loffs, you now have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. We are pleased to present policy 224, home-to-school transportation for approval. This policy was last discussed, or last brought up for review three years ago in January of 2020. Maybe just a little background, just as far as the distances and things like that go for the trustees. We initially, for secondary, I want to talk about secondary panel right now. Secondary panel used to be a four-kilometer distance. That was changed in the spring of 2014 or so to the current 3.2 kilometers. That aligns as well with the public board, so we both have the same distance for both elementary and secondary panels. The only additional changes we made this time were, again, similar to our previous policy, very small, more wordsmithing type changes that we've made to this policy. I'm open for any questions or comments, everyone, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, superintendent Loffs. Trustees, I now open the floor to any questions or comments on this policy. Trustee Saunders?
Yeah, through you, superintendent Loffs, is there any opportunity to restore the four-kilometer numbers? What are the limitations, and what would, what would preclude us from, from doing that? Is there's an opportunity to discuss this with the public board?
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Over to superintendent Loffs.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Would be a possibility to move it to four kilometers again. There would be definitely some savings with that. We can have a different amount or distance from the public board. It does make it more complicated, though, when we're working together as a consortium to have a different range or distance relative to our co-terminous board. But there's nothing precluding us from not doing that.
Thank you, superintendent Loffs. Super, trustee Saunders, follow up?
Yeah, how would we do that? What's the process of doing that?
Thank you for the question, superintendent Loffs.
We could make the change in our policy and bring it back to the, to our consortium to discuss that and to implement those changes, if we so want. Or we can take it back, and I can get additional information for trustees if they wish to make changes such as that.
Thank you, superintendent Loffs. Did trustee Duarte, can I just ask trustee Saunders to follow up?
Yeah, and sorry for asking this. It's just, it's an issue in, in my constituency, where I've got a whole ton of people north of Dundas. And right now, because of the 3.2 limit, limitation, they can't get a bus. And they're concerned with other kids having to cross, like, the, well, it can be eight lanes of Dundas to get to Holy Trinity School. So that's of a particular interest to me, to, if we could possibly move that forward. Because it's, it's, like, if you're familiar with the Trafalgar in Dundas, there are now eight lanes each way. So there's, so the more kids I can get on a bus, the better.
Thank you, trustee Saunders. Superintendent Loffs, I think you had your hand up.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Just so trustee Saunders knows, if we went to four kilometers, that would be less students on the bus, not more.
We're at 3.2 now?
We are 3.2 now.
So if we, we say, if you live within four kilometers, how do we have less students? Sorry.
Sorry, if you're, if you're 3, 3.2 kilometers or less, or sorry, or more, you will get a bus if you move it to four kilometers?
Oh, I see, okay, sorry. So it's 3.2 kilometers or more, okay, all right. Then I withdraw my issue. Sorry about that.
So we'll pretend we didn't hear anything?
We'll pretend it just...
Okay, thank you, trustee Saunders. Trustee Duarte?
Madam Chair, just was going to add a piece of information, that changing this numbers affects the whole of Halton, and that is tied to the budget. And that's tied to funding for transportation. As of now, we are underfunded. So just to add some information.
Thank you for that, and I think really, at this point, it's a moot point, right? Perfect. Okay, thank you. I see no more questions. Waiting? Oh, trustee Carabella, you just got in.
Thank you. Sorry, Madam Chair. I just was reflecting on how the consortium works. And so the other, because sometimes we've been invited to their meetings. So can I get an explanation of what a role of a trustee would be at the meeting that is held at HSTS that comprises both our board and the public board?
Thank you, trustee Carabella. I'm going to delegate that to Director Klein.
Well, I'm going to rely on superintendent Loffs and trustee Duarte. I've been to one meeting so far, but the meetings are, once again, where the public board and the Catholic board and the consortium of bus companies work together to do a variety of things, not least of which is to arrive at our policy and procedures. But I would go back to, to my colleagues here.
Superintendent Loffs, I'll add on to that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair, if that's okay? Sorry. Both our board, trustee Carabella and the public board, have equal, equal representation on the consortium. So as Director Klein has mentioned, I'm part of it right now. Both chairs of both boards are on it, as well as both directors are on it, and the SBO for the public board. So there's three and three on each side. Any kind of comments or concerns, really, the idea would be for it to be brought up by one of the three of us to the, to the committee, or to the consortium, to discuss further. As far as discussions and things like that, really, it is a corporation. It's as a, it's set up as a corporation with board of directors, and we have, like I said, equal representation for each board of directors. So the, in, in the world that's been devised, is that we would bring it up to the table, any questions or concerns that we have as a group. When I say we, I mean the trustees as a group, and then that would be brought forward.
Thank you, superintendent Loffs. Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow up?
I have a follow up, but I think trustee Duarte was going to also add to that.
Trustee Duarte put his hand up, like everybody else.
I thought I was part of the previous question. I thought I was part of the...
Go ahead, trustee Duarte.
No, let me put my hand up. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sorry. It's very exciting today with good topics. So, so, Madam Chair, to answer trustee Carabella's question, the role of the board of directors is to have discussions like we are doing. Trustees are, were not invited, but I'm trying to make it a thing where trustees get invited to meetings. There should be transparency, because at the end of the day, we are answering questions of ratepayers. Ratepayers ask trustees questions, so you've got to know what's happening there. So it's a good practice to invite you, and I've communicated this to HSTS, and they are going to be inviting trustees. So there are three meetings, or four meetings in a year, and trustees have started getting invited. So please feel free to come and invite. And the thing is, trustees cannot participate in those meetings, but you can ask your questions through me or superintendent Loffs, and that's our role. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Duarte, and I'm just teasing. And I've sat in front of some of them, and I think, you know, it breaks our perception and with our stakeholders asking us questions. I think sometimes they think that we make those decisions at the board level, that there isn't a consortium. So the more we get that information, correct information out, I think the better off our stakeholders will be. Thank you for that. Do you have a follow up, trustee Carabella? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move to a recorded vote. So we are going to start with student trustee Kuzma.
In favor.
Thank you. Student trustee Chuma?
In favor.
Student trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
And I am in favor. That passes unanimously. The policy will be brought forward to the next regular board meeting on January 17th, 2023. Thank you, everybody. Moving on. Item 6.4, which is V-07, bequest to a school or to the board. May I have someone please move that the policy committee recommends that policy V-07 bequests to a school or to the board be forwarded along with amendments to the January 17th, 2023, regular board meeting for approval? May I have a mover? Trustee Carabella?
I can second it.
Seconded by trustee Agnew. Superintendent Loffs, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. We are pleased to present policy 507, bequest to a school or to the board. Again, very minor changes, very small changes to this, to this policy that we're suggesting to the board. I know there might be some questions about the $10,000 and such, that $10,000 limit. In my time, I don't recall us ever bringing a item to board for the $10,000. We have brought ones for donations that are over $10,000. We've had a couple of those, like, back in 2018 and 2019, we brought forward for approval, donations that we received to the schools, but not necessarily bequest at this point in time. So you might think, why have I seen one of these? We haven't received one. So we haven't had any to bring to board. But this policy is being presented in the event, that we do have one, we would obviously bring it to the board.
Thank you, superintendent Loffs. Okay, trustees, I now open the floor to any questions. I see trustee Carabella has her hand up? Oh, no, she doesn't. No, I didn't. Yeah, no, she doesn't. Okay. Okay, I don't see any questions or comments, so we can now take it to a recorded vote. Okay, trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
Trustee Murphy? I'll go back. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Chuma?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
And I'm in favor. This passes unanimously. Okay, so the policy will be brought forward to the next regular board meeting on January 17th, 2023. Okay, item number seven, discussion items. There are no discussion items on tonight's agenda. Item number eight, information items. Items 8.1 to 8.8 are administrative procedures provided for our information and that were already approved at the January 2nd, 2023, senior administrative meeting. Any questions that you may have can be directed to the corresponding superintendent? Any questions that you may have can be directed to the corresponding superintendent. And item 8.9, upcoming agenda items for the February 14th, 2023 policy committee meeting. These are included for our information regarding agenda items for the upcoming policy meeting. So any questions can be directed to Superintendent Bala. Okay, item number nine, miscellaneous information. We have no miscellaneous information. Item number 10, correspondence, there was none submitted. In camera, item number 11, there is nothing to discuss, discuss on an in camera session. And item 12, I don't see any absenteeism, so we don't need to have a motion to excuse absent committee members. And item 13, adjournment, closing prayer. May I have a motion to adjourn? Agnew and trustee Saunders, second? That's so funny. I want to be in on the joke, no. Okay, so all in favor, show hands? Any opposed? Perfect, thank you very much. Now may I ask trustee Carabella to please lead us in a closing prayer?
Thank you. So as we begin the new year, let us stay ever under the protection of Our Father and Our Lady and Saint Joseph. Please join me in the Our Father and Hail Mary. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed are thou amongst women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us sinners now and at the hour of our death. Amen. And Saint Joseph, pray for us. Name the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for a great meeting. Please be safe out there, be happy and healthy. Thank you.